Uh, this is the city clerk. Um, I just want to give everybody an update that the mayor is currently trying to log in. We're having some technical difficulties, so we'll be with you just a moment.
Good evening and welcome to the city of, city of Helena and county commissioners administrative meeting. The time is four zero three and I apologize, but uh, I have some serious difficulties logging in. So anyway, this meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role please? And I don't know, but I can't see what you're sharing.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Uh, would you like me to take role?
Yes, please.
At CAO vaults. Uh, I see Rogers on for the record, interim city manager Jotun.
Here.
City Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Uh, city commissioner fever.
Oh, he did say he was not going to make this meeting. He emailed me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Commissioner Reed.
Here.
City Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Uh, County Commissioner Hunt House.
Here.
Uh, County Commissioner Ralph. Do not see Commissioner Ralph in the attendees or on the panelists. Uh, moving on, uh, I do see Commissioner McCormick is in the panelist. I'm trying to promote him or in the attendees. I'm trying to promote, uh, Commissioner McCormick to the panelists. He just needs to accept. Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, and Mayor Collins.
Here.
All right, welcome. Uh, the joint city county minutes were for January fourth, twenty twenty two and joint city county minutes for February first. We're received. Do we have any corrections addition? To make on those minutes, speak now forever hold your peace. I don't see any hands raised or anything. So those minutes will be accepted. Joint board appointments. Thomas, uh, uh, Mr. Manager, Acting City Manager, do you want to explain what's going on here with the planning board?
Yes, uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioners. Roger and I recommend that we, um, table these, uh, the consideration of planning board member appointments. It was brought to our attention that, um, at least one of the members of the planning board, the ninth member, um, has a pretty unique set of criteria that has to be met. Um, and it, we need to verify that the applicants meet that criteria being specifically from one of the district board of conservation, um, or if that person cannot be met an alternative. So we just wanted to, to verify that before we move forward with appointing people to, uh, candidates to the joint city county planning board.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions for? The acting city manager. This is gonna be a short media looks like. Yes, Commissioner Logan, not because I said it will be short means you can raise your hand.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna do, Mr. Mayor. So, um, could we go to find out, um, the composition of the city county planning board? Is that, is that, uh, available on either the city or county's website?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Logan, uh, I'm not sure, but I will certainly check, um, the, the composition of the joint city county planning board is dictated by the interlocal agreement. The bylaws and state law all mirror each other, but I will review and make sure that we have that posted somewhere.
Commissioner, uh, thank you, Commissioner Logan and Acting City Manager. Commissioner Hunthausen.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and, uh, Acting City Manager and Roger, I, just a comment, um. Well, first of all, thank you for, um, making sure that we're on track to meet all the criteria and, and, and I'm glad somebody looked into, uh, making sure that ninth position was, uh, appointed in a proper manner. So I'm all for that. However, I believe that this position's been open for quite an extended period of time, and so I would encourage us to, um, whatever that process is and whatever the procedure is that we, uh, kind of get, get the next steps, uh, taken so that we can get to a place where you can make a decision or, or, uh, where a person is appointed to that spot. So just a, uh, word of encouragement that we move on this at relatively good pace. We all have a lot on our plates, but, uh, don't want it to fall on the back burner again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Any comments or questions from the Commissioners? Okay, moving along. Items for joint discussion. MDT custom project update and conversion conversation. And who is spearheading this discussion?
Uh, Mayor Collins, uh, David. Sorry.
You have the floor. Uh, uh, manager Jordan.
No, I was just gonna say that, uh, David Knopki and the folks from MDT are gonna be giving a presentation. Mostly the folks from MBT giving a presentation update on the Custer, uh, project.
Okay, and I apologize. I see a gentleman here. Is that, i- is the name wrong on that? Okay, you have the floor, whoever it is.
Uh, Mayor Collins, Acting City Manager, uh, City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County Commissioners. Thank you very much for our opportunity to come before you today to discuss Custer Avenue. I am not Katie Potts. She is much younger and better looking than I am. I am Jim Wingeter. I am the Great Falls District Administrator for MDT in Great Falls. Our team today will be presenting details on, on Custer Avenue so that we can further our collaboration that we have as a team, MDT, City of Helena and, and Lewis and Clark, uh, Lewis and Clark, uh, County. Our goal today is, is simply to update you with the details and, and current standing of the Custer Avenue situation and, um, move forward to the next steps that would be involved with our discussions. Our team members today that will be presenting and talking are Jimmy Combs. He is our Great Falls District Preconstruction Engineer. Carol Strizzich is our Multimodal Planning and Bureau Chief in Helena. Katie Potts is our statewide urban and, uh, section supervisor. And Jeff Streeter is our transportation planner for the Great Falls District. I want you to know we truly value and want to continue to improve our relationships with the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County in this collaborative effort and work through these complex issues that, that are facing us with the Custer Avenue, uh, project. So with that, Katie Potts will take over and, and begin our presentation. Thank you all again.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you Commissioners for inviting us to your work session today. Apologies for the, the name swap there. Um, I think Jimmy Combs will likely show up with my name as well, so we, we did have to share our, our participant link. So I hope that will be okay for today's purposes. Um, regardless, again, thanks for having us today to discuss Custer Avenue. So understanding there are new city commissioners since the last time we've discussed Custer Project. I do intend to provide a pretty high level overview of the Helena urban area, the urban highway system and associated federal funding. And from there, we'll get into the history and background of the Custer Project scope, available funding and cost estimates to really bring us to where we are today. So again, this is all for background information. Uh, the state of Montana has nineteen urban areas, uh, located in all five districts. Um, our urban areas have a population of five thousand or greater and, and these areas are larger than our city limits themselves. So it's going to incorporate, um, not just the city core, but, um, areas that are kind of more urban in nature beyond those city limits. So each urban area is really encouraged to form a committee for the purposes of coordinated transportation planning. And the committee for the Helena urban area was established in the early nineties back in nineteen ninety-two. So Helena's TCC includes representation from the road authorities within the urban boundary. So that includes the City of Helena, City of East Helena, Lewis and Clark County and MDT. The body is responsible for conducting a coordinated and cooperative planning process for transportation planning within the Helena urban area. So again, that's why you see that coordination with more than just the city. We're looking at the, at East Helena and Lewis and Clark County as well to represent that entire urban area. And then the responsibilities of the TCC include development of the long range transportation plan and the prioritization and selection of urban funded projects. Um, these urban funded projects require funding agreements between the department and the local authority where the department is located. So in the case of Custer, this would be the City of Helena. Um, for example, if the urban priority project was Lake Helena Drive, the project sponsor would then be Lewis and Clark County. And so I, I hope that provides a, just a baseline understanding of the purposes of the TCC. Uh, now I'd like to us all to take a look at the urban highway system and the funding program itself. So on the screen, you'll see the integrated highway system that falls within the Helena urban area. All routes shown in gold, those represent the urban highway system. So, and that is a state, it's not a federal designated system. And that has a dedicated funding source for improvements which are prioritized at the local level. So again, the urban highway, urban highway system itself is a, it's a state system. Um, with that, the urban highway program provides financial resources to make roadway improvements on this highway system. So statewide, it's an eleven point three million dollar program and it's distributed among all nineteen urban areas through a population based formula which utilizes the decennial census population of each urban area in proportion to the state, to the total state urban area population. So you're getting your proportional share in funding as you, as you sit in population. Um, and then back to the, the highway systems themselves. Um, each individual system shown on the map has a dedicated funding source for roadway improvements. So while MDT prioritizes funding and is able to select projects on the interstate, NHS and lower tier systems, urban funding priorities and project selection is accomplished at the local level. So in the case of Helena, that responsibility is again with the TCC. And because the department provides that funding and the opportunity for each urban area to select their own improvements and select their own priorities. MDT doesn't have a dedicated funding source for the urban highway system. So that kind of leads us as to why each urban project requires a sponsor to cover project costs that are over and above available urban funds. So that project sponsor again, and I know we went over this, but I'll mention it one last time. That project sponsor is the entity whose limits, whether it's the city or the county boundary, the project is located. So same example as before, if our current urban priority project within the Helena urban area was Lake Helena Drive, the project sponsor would be Lewis and Clark County. Um, since the current priority project is Custer and that falls within the city limits, project sponsor is City Helena. Okay, that was my ten thousand foot view overview of TCC urban system and, and, uh, urban funding. So let's talk Custer specifically, right? Um, Custer Avenue capacity improvements have been recommended in every local long range transportation plan dating back to the early nineties, uh, nineteen ninety-three and included in the current long range plan. So in August of two thousand sixteen, the TCC submitted a formal request to nominate Custer as the urban funding funded priority project. The requested scope of work of the project was to reconstruct Custer between Montana and Green Meadow to meet design year traffic volumes. At that time, there was a lot of uncertainty with regard to the cost, the funding and the feasibility of the needed improvements. So in twenty seventeen, a feasibility study was initiated to really determine what was needed and evaluate the fundable segments and each of those fundable segments to have logical termini to improve not just the operational performance of the corridor, but also the safety of the corridor. And that study was finalized in January of two thousand nineteen. Um, but due to cost estimates and funding limitations, the TCC then approved a motion to prioritize urban funds for Montana Tibetan. So that's what we're currently working with is that Montana Tibetan section. And then again, as we've mentioned a few times before, um, as is necessary for these urban funded projects, the agreement was drafted and provided to the city for signature, and I believe that was included in your meeting materials. So again, very, very high level overview of how we've gotten to where we are today. And I'm gonna hand it over to Jimmy to speak about the feasibility analysis and where we are with, um, project scope as well.
You are muted. Yes.
Yeah, I, I finally got it. Thank you. Um, thank you, Katie. Mr. Mayor, Acting City Manager, Commissioners, uh, again, thank you for, for, uh, your, your time here today. And so what, what I'm gonna speak a little bit about is a lot of the engineering stuff. So I'm gonna speak fairly specifically to what the uh, need for the project is and some of the engineering work that was completed um, as part of the feasibility study. And so the first thing we really need to do is to understand and emphasize the importance of Custer Avenue to the greater Helena area transportation system. Um, roadways are, are very similar to utility infrastructure in that the different parts of that infrastructure have different functions. And so in the case of a roadway network or a roadway system, roadways are assigned a classification in accordance with their primary function. And that's what this little illustration here is really showing. So for example, our arterial roadways are intended to emphasize in a strat and stress mobility over access where your local roads and local streets emphasize access versus mobility. Next slide, please.
Uh, before you go to the next slide, sir, would you call, state your name for the record, please?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I apologize. My name is James Combs. I'm the, uh, Montana Department of Transportation, Great Falls District Preconstruction Engineer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So this slide here is an illustration of, um, it, it shows the different functional classifications of the roadways in the Helena area. And Custer is classified as a minor arterial. It is a major east-west throughway and it's part of the arterial network for the Helena area. Um, and again, if you will, the, the roadway networks are really analogous to a, a water or sewer network. As demand increases due to growth or development, the infrastructure has to be expanded to provide enough capacity to meet the demand. Um, you, you can kind of think of it, uh, uh, kind of like a tree also. So a main trunk of a tree might be a, a major arterial and the trunk branches are the, the minor arterials. And in order for that tree to stay healthy, the, the main trunk and those branches need to be able to have, they need to have enough water comparing, carrying capacity to feed all of the other smaller, uh, branches and leaves and whatnot. And, and one of the things that we, we see in Helena and you can, you can see by looking at this visual is that there, there's really a lack of east-west arterial roadways in, in Helena. Um, their previous long range transportation plans did recommend adding additional east-west arterials. In, in the end, they just, the, the way the, the, uh, land development has occurred. And at the time it was, it was, it was kind of deemed a little bit, to be a little bit too far away from the city to really support its use. And, and it's, um, with the land development, it's, it's getting more difficult to find strategic locations for the dedication of, of public right of way. Um, and so again, with Custer, which is highlighted in yellow there, Custer really is a major east-west network connection. Um, it, it's, it's the major direct throughput from the west end of half, excuse me, the west end of Helena um, to the east Helena Valley, and it's also one of only five routes that provides direct access to the interstate. Um, and it also, uh, Custer Avenue in this quarter also, um, provides direct access to some fairly significant destinations, um, including Ford Georgians, uh, Capital High School, the Fairgrounds and, and the golf course. Next slide, please. So part of the feasibility study that was conducted included a, a comprehensive traffic uh, study and a traffic report. And the intent of that report was to, uh, identify and evaluate feasible improvement options to improve the operational and safety performance of the corridor. A, a, a previous study in two thousand five kind of did something similar. It analyzed the, the current and future conditions at that time on the same corridor and, and provided some recommendations for enhancements. This report really, it provides a very detailed quantitative engineering analysis that really quantifies the current operations, the projected operations. And it identifies some improvement alternatives. And in a, you know, in, in one, on one hand, the, the report really supports what most people already recognize in that the the existing roadway configuration is insufficient to meet the current traffic demand. I mean, we're already seeing. You know, you, you don't necessarily need an engineer to tell you if you're having to wait in, in a, in a long line of cars at a signal. But another thing that I think we can glean out of the report is that if, if something isn't done, the, the result is going to be additional congestion, continued congestion, additional congestion. And we're probably going to start seeing a lot of traffic utilizing the local streets as, as through roadways instead of providing just that access, they're going to be using those as, as through roads. And that can result in a lot of additional maintenance, a lot of additional stress and wear and tear on the local street infrastructure. Next slide, please.
Jimmy, if I could jump in here real quick.
Please do, David.
Mayor, Commissioners, this David Knopke's Director of Transportation Systems for the City of Helena. I just wanted to touch on James's last comment on the cut through traffic and this slide actually shows it pretty well. So we're already getting complaints from people cutting through on Custer on the McHugh corridor and other streets trying to get around the congestion at the peak times. And this not only, you know, adds traffic to those collector or local roads, but also increases conflicts with the, the local users of that road that aren't anticipating, you know, frustrated drivers that are, you know, potentially driving, exceeding the speed limit. Or just trying to find their way around that are not familiar with the area. So we're already seeing these issues during the peak times and as the report suggests, we're only going to see things get worse and we really don't want to have that cut through traffic through our residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And so this, this slide here, what, what this slide is really intended to show is this kind of takes some of the information out of that engineering study and, and puts it in a, in a, in a visual that what, what this is really showing is so the, for example, the black lines are, are what you would probably expect to see in terms of a queue length on a typical day in the evening peak hour. So those, that really represents what, what you would, you can anticipate on an average day in terms of how many cars are sitting there just parked, not moving at all or going very, very slowly. And so what the blue is, the blue lines are what the projected operations would be today with the five lane roadway to, from, from Montana to Benton. The red is what would be the projected conditions in two thousand and forty-two. And what you can really see is that it's it's absolute gridlock in, in the, in the P M P gets gridlock more or less from, from one end to the other, certainly on the the eastbound and the westbound isn't a lot better. It's, it's pretty rough, at least to McHugh and, and even west of McHugh, it's not great. And so what the yellow is, is the yellow lines represent the, the queue lengths in the projected two thousand forty-two conditions if there was a five lane to Benton Avenue. And I, and I think the translation is, and I'll just reiterate again, what, what David had mentioned is that the, the if, if we don't, if something isn't done, what the, it's, what, what you can reasonably expect is just total gridlock. And, and again, folks just avoiding the arterial system to, and, and using those local roads and those collectors to, to, instead of using the arterial road system. Next slide, please. So now I'd like to talk a little bit about public involvement. Public involvement was another critical part of the feasibility study. There was, we, we, there was a consultant was hired to manage the public involvement. There was fourteen meetings in two thousand and eighteen during the feasibility study. Two of those meetings were public open houses. There were several other meetings with, that were more specific to stakeholders such as the Helena Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, Chamber of Commerce, the Capitol High School, the Fairgrounds, Ford Georgians, Bike Walk Montana, Lewis and Clark County Disaster and E M S, Community Development, Capital Transit and the American Legion. Some of the things that came out of that public involvement process are one that for the public's sake, the multimodal considerations need to account are, they are a priority. And they need to account for school age user groups. There was a lot of mixed support for roundabouts and signals. Roundabouts and raised medians have been eliminated due to a lot of strong opposition that was expressed about restricting access. And also because of the excessive amount of, of right of way and space that the roundabouts require, there was a heavy desire to maintain at least, to maintain the current level of access. And, and there was, there was some distrust, distrust in the process and disappointment in the timeline to construct that was, that was expressed. People, I, I think people are, are wanting to see some movement on this. So as far as the, the project scope, so the, the feasibility study is really kind of a launching pad that helps us get to a place where we establish a project scope of work. So we, we, we know what the project need is. And we've identified some very important project considerations that need to be addressed. So the Custer Avenue, it was nominated by the Helena T C C to address operational performance. The, you know, the, 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 the need to address traffic congestion is pretty well noted and established in the current and previous long range transportation plans. And in the current and the past corridor studies and just based on what we've been hearing from the public. A, a five lane facility is really a, a basic fundamental requirement to meet the project need while addressing public comments regarding maintaining access and also supporting reasonable, supporting good safety performance. There, there aren't any other alternatives identified that are going to address the project need while accounting for safety performance and access. Future operations. What, what's this going to look like down the road in the future? And the reality of it is, is it's, it's probably going to likely require additional right widening along the rest of the corridor at some point in time. And so what happens if the, if the corridor, whole corridor is widened to five lanes? And, and then what happens in the future then? And that, that's, that's hard to say. We, you know, we, we, we don't have a a, a crystal ball. I'd say the future operations and the enhancements are going to depend on technology, automated vehicles. We're going to start seeing more and more of those. Public transportation, actual growth and operational performance. But I, I think those are those are things that, that can and should be addressed through the long range transportation planning updates and through local planning and zoning. Multimodal considerations. Again, the, the public involvement process really noted and stressed the importance of multimodal functionality, safety and security as a, as a priority and a critical scope of work consideration. And when I say security by security, what I'm talking about is I mean, providing a roadway environment that really encourages and supports use by all user groups. And also again, recognizing that those those school age children are our most vulnerable user group and they need to be accounted for. Next slide, please. So how do we do that? Well, one way we do that is, is by being, one, by being deliberate, but also understanding that there, there is some design flexibility in the preliminary design. And those are things that can certainly be considered and evaluated. I think when it comes to multimodal safety and security, there's three things that come to my mind at least that really need to be addressed. One being travel alongside Custer Avenue. And another would be crossing Custer Avenue. We, we, you know, we want to be able to provide an environment that feel safe and is safe for those users to to bike or walk adjacent to Custer, but also to cross Custer. And the other, I think another critical element there for the design and design flexibility is, is considering being aware of the user groups and the destinations, having a good understanding of what the destinations are and what the user groups are. And those are, so school age children are, are certainly the most vulnerable user group. And you know, Ford Georgians and Helena Capital are a couple locations that come to mind as as destinations, but those are also things that can be, you know, the, the destinations, if there's other destinations, those can be refined through the design process also. Uh, once a, once there a funding agreement is in effect, the, the design can advance beyond where we're at now. The, I think with, with as far as design flexibility and designing for multimodal facilities, there's a, just right off the top of my head, some things that came to mind, some possibilities are, are traffic calming and reduce lane widths. So there, there is some flexibility to potentially reduce the lane widths to adjust the shoulder widths, to do shared bike lanes, to do intersection ball bouts, raised or colored crossings, what we call rapid rectangular flashing beacons. And despite the opposition to raised median, there may be, there's, there's less access between McHugh and Cooney. And so there may be the potential to have some raised median through part of that stretch between McHugh and Cooney, particularly in front of the Ford Georgian school there. What we call positive protection, which would be barrier and that could be either manmade barrier or artificial barriers, like not artificial, excuse me, natural barriers, like like landscaping, so lighting, landscaping, landscaping. And then just, you know, other innovative crossing and enhancements or, or multimodal enhancements. Those are, again, those are just some things that kind of popped into my brain right off the top of my head. But I think more importantly, I, I, the traffic calming and the multimodal considerations are very well suited to be championed by what we call a technical design committee. And the technical design committee is, would be in, in, include M D T F H W A and the city of Helena, there'd be one voting member from M D T, one voting member from F, F H W A and two voting members from the city. And really part of the charge of that committee with, is to ensure partnering, communication and collaboration between all three parties. And that committee can provide the oversight and the direction regarding design decisions and tracking the project budget and facilitating production of the final bid package. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Katie and she's going to speak to you a little bit more about funding.
Thanks, Jimmy. Director Knopke, did you have anything else to add before I, I moved on there?
No, I think that there's, the technical design review committee is, is a key feature that we have discussed and it puts in some of that local control into the decision making process from start to finish. Not just here and there, but from the beginning of design to the end of construction to where the local, you know, the city has some, we can sit down at the table, talk about changers, talk about the design elements that only will enhance what the city's vision is and enhance the project as a whole, moving forward, if that's the direction that the commission, the commissions are, you know, wanted to go with.
Very good. Thank you. Jimmy, thanks again. So now, now I'm going to spend a little bit of time discussing the funding that we have available for this particular project as well as the current cost estimates. So what you see on the screen now is, is a table just kind of outlining where the current urban funds are sitting in terms of availability for Custer Avenue. So you'll see twenty twenty-seven S T P U funds. And the reason we list twenty twenty-seven is because we're anticipating beginning design this current year in twenty twenty-two. And generally, project development is a five year process. And so out in twenty twenty-seven, you're looking at about fifteen point two million dollars that are available for the use on Custer. And that second line you see that borrow five years. The department, the department and the Montana Transportation Commission has a policy that allows each urban area to borrow against their future years of allocation. And really, it's, it's for purposes like this where we have a, a large need within an urban area. And the urban program itself with the accumulated funds as they sit today aren't able to complete the funding package. So we do have this ability to borrow. And really the rules around that include borrowing up to five years of your future allocation or half of the urban program itself. So if you'll remember, the urban program is eleven point three million dollars on an annual basis across the entire state. And so for the Helena urban areas purposes, because your annual allocation sits just above a million dollars, you get to realize that full five years of borrow rather than half the program. Some of our larger urban areas like Bozeman, oh, I'm sorry, not Bozeman, Billings, Missoula, Great Falls, for instance, they reach that half the program before they reach that five year mark. So again, for the Helena urban area, we're looking at five years worth of borrow to account for another five point two million. And so our total available funds in the urban program alone sit at twenty point four million dollars that would be available for Custer. I guess I also just wanted to point out that, again, these are federal funds that are matched by the state. So with the urban funds alone, there isn't a contribution from the city. Okay, moving on. So the thing everybody's probably waiting for, let's talk cost estimates. So the current cost estimate is based on the general footprint, footprint that Jimmy went over. So it's a five lane facility, sidewalks on the north side, perpetuation of a shared used path on the south side, signalized intersections for the length from Montana to Benton. You're going to see a cost estimates broken out between Montana and McHugh and Montana to Benton. That's just to give you a range of an idea of what a segmented construction might look like. And then you'll see the two columns, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two. So the, the funding agreement that was developed and presented to the city was based on a cost estimate from twenty nineteen. You don't need me to tell you this. We're all aware, the pandemic has thrown an app, a branch in not only in our daily lives, but the work that we do. And so we're seeing things like labor shortages, supply chain issues, material costs skyrocketing and inflation is currently sitting at a forty year high. And so the environment has completely changed since And so the environment has completely changed since the twenty nineteen cost estimate was developed. So for those reasons, MDT reran estimates using updated quantity prices based on bids that were receiving. And, and we also updated the anticipated year of delivery and those associated inflation costs. So that's why we're seeing a, a, a cost increase from our twenty twenty two estimate. So. How do we move, I mean, oh, hold on a second, Jeff, sorry. So as we sit today, you, there's a funding shortfall for the nominated. Project between Montana and Benton segment of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we really want to stress here that these estimates that we're using today are very preliminary. I mean, as Jimmy mentioned, we. We haven't really begun to dig into the design, we're currently sitting at about less than thirty percent design. But as the design progresses, we'll be able to provide a more refined cost estimate. Um, and then again, that TDC that both Director Knopki and Jimmy spoke to. Um, we're proposing for this project to put in place is. The purpose is really to represent the city's interest of the project and not only the design element interest, but also the overall budget. Budget of the project. Um, so due to that particular funding shortfall, the TCC itself needs to make some decis- decisions. On how we want to proceed. Um, some of those options could include. Uh, moving forward with the project to design Custer from Montana to Benton. Understanding as we move through design, uh, that segmented construction may be necessary to fund and construct the project. But you know, what does segmented construction look like? Um, you know, once the project is at final design. Then we reassess cost estimates again as, you know, cost estimates are refined along the entire process when we get to final design, we really put together our. Final cost estimate. And if we overshot our estimates where we sit today, economy improves, inflation backs off. And we don't have a funding shortfall, we move forward constructing the project as is today from Montana to Benton. If there is a funding shortfall, we look at ways to trim project elements uh, or include additive alternates in the big package. Um, so I also want to note that MDT does have policies in place regarding contract award. And if bids come, if bids come in over ten percent of our final engineer's estimate. Um, we don't necessarily have to award that project or award that bid. And so all of that is to say, the city is not going to be left on the hook with an unexpected contribution to this project. Conversations will be had the entire time, we're all going to be well aware of where we're sitting with cost estimates and with, with bids that come in. Um, so other options to move forward with the project would be um, identifying an additional, additional funding to fill that shortfall now. Or we delay moving forward with the design of Custer until there's sufficient urban funds to, to fully design and construct. Um, although this, that really will be a challenge with the current inflation environment. Um, and really, it's the reason this project is still waiting to happen today, but we continue to delay the needed improvements due to costs. Okay, next slide. Thanks Jeff. So really, city commission, you know, what are our next steps and how do we move this project forward and what is, what is the commission's role here? Um, really, the execution of a funding agreement is what's going to allow the project to move forward. And I know we mentioned this before, but I'll say it again, the, the agreement that is currently in your meeting materials includes those cost estimates from two thousand nineteen. So should the city want to move forward and, and execute that agreement, um. Us at the department, we do need to update that and put in those twenty twenty two numbers to, to get, bring everything up to date. If the city of Helena is, isn't willing to enter into that funding agreement, the, the next step in that instance will be. The city uh, requesting action at TCC to drop the project. And that will then allow TCC and the Helena ur- urban area, the larger urban area, to select a new project priority for the use of urban funds. So again, you know, not necessarily looking for a decision this very, very moment, but understand that. Though, that's really what we're looking at for next steps here and if the city does want to move forward and, and let's enter into a funding agreement and. Kick Custer off and see a project develop within the next five years, um, MDT will uh, revise that funding agreement and get it back into the city's hands. For consideration. And so with that, we would really like to open it up um, for questions from both the city and the county commission. Um, city staff, mayor, Mayor Collins as well, and um, I think all of us at the department are able to answer whatever questions you might have.
Katie, Katie, thank you so much for this presentation. Part of it, oh, it had me spinning. But uh, we appreciate your, your presentation, Director Knopki, we thank you also. And the other team members. I see Commissioner Dean, you have your hand raised, what?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, one thing that I just wanted to note, it was mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. Um, was that the TCC voted to take this project from Montana to Benton. I would note that the two city commissioners were dissenting votes. On that vote, we said. We supported the project, but we only wanted it to go as far as the funding would allow while meeting all of the. Um, safety measures, traffic calming measures, um, city standards like boulevards and sidewalks. Um, and, and we, we were defeated, um, but the su- two city commissioners were the dissenting votes and wanted. Made the motion instead to go just as far as the funds would allow. Um, but the TCC rejected that and, and. Um, we were outvoted to go to Benton. Um, I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so a couple of things, um. With this cost estimate and thank you for providing these cost estimates, um, because I know this has been a question. That has been coming up a lot. Um, you noted that it was included, the, the one sidewalk, but does it include any other? Traffic calming or safety measures, that twenty million dollar estimate.
You, you.
Yeah, Jim, if you could please answer that, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
To answer your question, no, it does not.
Okay, um, so I think that this is, and I, I mean, I'll just, I think MDT knows how I feel about a lot of this. Because we've been in many meetings and I will repeat what I said before, I think MDT does an exceptional job on our highway system. I'm always really proud of it every time I have someone that's visiting from out of state. I say these are exceptional roads and I hope you take notice Idaho. I will say that, um. MDT is in the business of highways and I know they, they do work hard to help meet local needs, but this is a city street. Um, and people live around this city street and so safety um, remains a top priority for me. I don't think that we would characterize. Um, Montana in front of Helena High as safe for children right now. And I don't think we'd characterize Euclid in front of Kessler as safe for children right now, so that is my first concern. I don't think MDT is ignoring that, but I also think that, um, we are in a different. There, there's just a, a difference in, in what we consider, you know, what's. A neighborhood street and, and what's a highway. Um. So I think, you know, one of the things is that we've continued to want to see, you know, what does this look like with all the elements that would make it safe. Um, I, I still am not convinced that a five lane highway through the middle of town is safe in front of a school. Um, I know that I've, I've been told that, you know, there's ways to make it safe, but we haven't seen the estimates of what make it safe. Um, and I also, and I brought this up before in previous meetings, um. I, I don't, and, and I am not, there's a, a nationwide conversation happening, not just now, but. Uh, even for the past ten, fifteen years, uh, does more lane solve congestion? Um, and it's a disagreement between, I'm not a traffic engineer, um, but I do. I do work a lot in economics and within policy development. And I know that there is a, you know, general disagreement between what is called the law of peak hour traffic congestion and induced demand. Um, and in, induced demand says that the more like, just like schools, the more you build, they will come. Um, more capacity in roadways encourages more people to drive and doesn't actually improve congestion. It just creates more space for more cars. Um, and I don't necessarily think that that solves the issue that. Um, this project is, you know, trying to solve. I think that there's an opportunity to make a really great roadway that I do think is necessary, that includes, you know, safe. Places for people to walk, I cannot even tell you how many times I will drive that road at night coming home from, you know, Target or Lowe's. And there's someone walking on the other side of the road where there's not a sidewalk and you, you know, it scares the. Scares you. Um, so. I, I, I am still, um, I want this, I think this is a good project. I'm not convinced that this will solve congestion and I am not convinced that what we have before us is going to be safe for kids. Crossing the street. Um. Still left for someone to convince me otherwise, but especially when we're looking at the city potentially paying another. Three million dollars that we, to be perfectly honest, don't have. Um. It doesn't even address the traffic calming and safety features that we need. Um. To avoid the issues that we see at Euclid and Montana, um, I'm just still very concerned. Again, I mean that with the utmost respect, Jim, Jimmy, Katie, I really appreciate everything that you've done. Um. But I, I'm, I'm not convinced, especially when we're looking at, you know, potentially an extra three million dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner McCormick. You're muted.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you. And thank you, everybody, thank you, Katie, thank you, Jim. Uh, Commissioner Dean, uh, thank you for your comments. I was thinking about uh, something I read. Some time ago about uh, infrastructure dollars that might be available. Uh, through. What the acronym today is, but they were at one time. Uh, for projects that do connect uh, to the interstate system. And uh, in the comments, uh, I believe it was, uh. Jim, I, I think you, you said something about uh, studies uh, that were done. Uh, several years ago, uh, that uh, addressed the, the congestion and I like your map there and your projections, that works real well. Something has been on my mind for a long, long time, uh, is a bypass route. That, I think, to Commissioner Dean's concerns there, you know, about not solving the congestion. Question is about biting the bullet, I guess. And it, it building that, that bypass from Henderson on out to Highway twelve west. Uh, that would be, of course, uh, much more expensive. Uh, but whether we were, would be able to do that or just a Henderson to, uh, to Montana. Uh, has anybody, uh, Katie? Uh, had heard about those uh, bill grant opportunities. Uh, for projects such as this, anybody?
Commissioner McCormick, I can, I can respond to that if that's okay with everybody else on the line.
Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Commissioner McCormick, I believe what you're referring to are, are the raised grants, that's kind of the, the latest iteration of what was originally. Tiger and then build and now we're sitting with raised grants. Um. So the raised grants are continued in the most recent um, federal highway legislation, so we're working under um, IIJ, IIJA. Or bill, whichever acronym you prefer to use in the moment. Um, again, raised grants are included and, and they, there is a planning grant opportunity there. Um, and really, one of the first steps that the Helena urban area would want to take. If the idea of a bypass is something that sits well with, with everybody in the community is. Building that into a long range transportation plan, so you really want to show that need in the long range plan and that's what makes you competitive. For those, those particular raised grants and, and the planning grants and I believe right now the, the minimum. Um, award amount for a planning grant is a million dollars. Um, however, um, you know, the Helena urban area like we had talked about before. Has developed many long range transportation plans and if that was something that um. Was of interest to the area, that long range plan is, is the best place to really start planting that seed.
Thank you very much, Kate. Yep, thank you, that, that uh, kind of lays some groundwork. For what this might look like, uh, going forward. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, I wanted to let you know that, um, that the League of Cities and Towns. And several other cities through their representatives have been working with MDT. On these issues and one of the recent projects that we're undertaking is the update of what's called the lag manual, the local. Assistance manual that basically allows local jurisdictions to take over administration of the project. Um, that's a pretty significant undertaking with MDT and I think something everybody agrees would be beneficial. Um, it, you know, just floating an idea out there uh, that we could talk about as we move forward is maybe this could be a pilot project. That we could develop that would guide um, the practical lessons learned from this project into the lag manual. And would highlight some of the things that the cities can and can't do and, and help both parties understand. Um, that maybe these, these transportation uh, systems through urban areas are not quite as difficult as we may think.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Combs.
Sorry, gotta find the unmute button. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I do, I, I apologize, I, I should have. I should have clarified my answer a little bit better, Commissioner Dean, when you asked if, if the traffic calming is included in the estimate. So, a lot of those items that I had talked about when I was talking about traffic calming. We, we, we have a basic footprint right now, we, we have a conceptual design that is based on a footprint. Um, and that's what our estimate is based off of. Most of those traffic calming. Um, just thoughts that I, that I had talked about, most of those. Don't, aren't going to have any effect on the estimate. There's, there's flexibility built in there to do some of those things that are not going to affect the cost estimate. So the cost estimate does not include deliberate traffic calming measures per se, but. Um, and who knows what the design team would come up with, I mean, that's, that's, again, that's where I, I think there's a lot of value to a. Technical design committee and, and then working with a consultant. But a lot of those ones that just were kind of quick and dirty that I had thought up, most of those. Aren't any addition to the cost estimate, they're, they, those can be done in the existing footprint. Um, in line with what we're showing with our current quantities.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a, a process question and I'm not honestly sure who to direct this to, but. Um, given the, the time this evening and, and this presentation, um, I mean, what is the next step to continue this conversation? And get to some sort of a decision point and, and when might that happen? And again, I'm sorry, I have no idea who to direct that question to.
Uh, Commissioner Reed, thank you. Uh, Katie or Carol, would you be able?
Oh, you, you, you're taking over my meeting, huh? I see.
I got, Mr. Mayor, my sincerest apologies.
Miss Potts, you have the floor, no problem.
But, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I apologize, I'm not very good at, at the formal process of this and, and. I, I did not mean to take over your meeting, sir, my.
No problem.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um.
You bet.
Uh, uh, Katie, could you answer that? I'm sorry, sir.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor Collins, thank you, Commissioner Reed. Um, really, in, in terms of how do we, you know. Who says from the city, let, let's get going, let's do the funding agreement or let's continue this conversation. Um, we, excuse me, we do have a, a TCC meeting that should be next Tuesday. That's another really great opportunity to continue this conversation. Um, we also host uh, MDT. City Helena, City of East Helena and Lewis and Clark County, we host some um, monthly kind of coordination status meetings on projects. That's another really great opportunity to continue this conversation. And then of course, um, myself. Jimmy, Jim Wingeter, uh, Jeff and Carol, we are all available at any point in time to. Have, have an additional meeting, um, whenever the city says so. Um, so this is not the end all, we are well, we are open and. And welcome to additional conversation on this. Um, but at this, so if, if it does seem like the city would be interested in moving forward. And exploring, let's execute the funding agreement, we just need to hear that from the city and we can get that updated. Get it back into your hands and that can initiate those next steps and conversations.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the clarification, Katie. Uh, Commissioner Reed, are you done?
Nope, sorry, just a a quick follow up. So procedurally from our end, then, uh, Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to. Request that this go on to an agenda for the city? To discuss, uh, review the design next steps, et cetera? Is that?
Yes, it will be appropriate to include on. Yeah.
Great, then I will recommend that we, uh, work with the acting city manager to put this on an agenda. Um, in order to discuss and and talk about some of the concerns shared by Commissioner Dean and some of the comments made by the acting city manager. Uh, in order to. To decide if we are going to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Hunt House.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, um, I think this is a question for our MDT friends. I think we're working off of the two thousand fourteen transportation plan. And obviously, we do that every ten years, I think, so. Twenty four is coming. When do we start that process? And. It would not be, if I'm understanding the, uh, explanations here. Would it not be in that process that we would identify potential alternatives to? Uh, for example, an east-west bypass of some kind or something. Is that where we would do that? And when do we start that process? Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, if I can ask a question to, uh.
Yes, I see Katie. Katie has a hand raised, so Katie is about to answer you right now.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Thank you, Commissioner Hunt House. And, um. Really, the decision to update a a local long range transportation plan, uh, again, lies with the TCC. So if, and and I guess it's kind of thresholds that you would want to look for in terms of, is it time to update? That would be. Um, you know, population growth, um, which, you know, the Helena or larger urban area has seen. Completion of existing recommendations and priorities that were outlined in that most recent plan. And then also, you know, funding for the plan. Do you have, does the Helena urban area itself have the ability to pull together resources to to fund and update? Um, and so those would be some of those thresholds you want to look for in terms of, is it time or does the current plan? I guess you could also look at it and say, you know, have we have we implemented the recommendations in in the current plan? That we would see a a different set of recommendations moving out of an update. So those are just kind of some some things that you might want to think about when it. Determining, is it time to update a plan? And because, um, because. The Helena urban area hasn't yet met that NPO threshold, there isn't a requirement for an update cycle.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought there was a, I thought we had a ten year requirement to do that, so I'm I'm glad to be mistaken on that. That's good.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So. Seems like Ms. Potts had at some point in her presentation. Sort of put to us the question of. We want to do this or not, essentially. I mean, it was one or the other. And, um. It also seems like through this discussion that there is. The virgins of opinion in sort of a conceptual. Conceptual framework of. Is this going to solve the problem? In other words. MDT's projections seem to indicate that, um, congestion will be improved by this. Project and and Commissioner Dean's comments were. Uh, maybe not so much. So I think, uh. As we, as this moves forward to possibly on a mission meeting. Think we should. Really hear about that. That. Difference in in sort of concept of. You know, MDT's projections and the comments that. So. Maybe in that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any other comments or questions from the commission to our? MDT friends? Well, we want to thank you guys for this presentation. It was an eye opener. I I appreciate it and, uh. Look forward to hearing. More about it. And more from you. I see, uh, Jim, if I'm not mistaken, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Acting, uh, City Manager. We want to thank all of you again for taking your time. Out of your busy schedule to 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 listen to the information we presented. Um, we're working with you partnership in this. This is your decision to make. This is your project. We are helping you to facilitate that decision and to facilitate whatever project you decide to do. So. So we're here to help you. We're. I work for the government. I'm here to help. So thank you all for your time and, uh, let us know how we can be of help.
Thanks, Jim. We appreciate you. Thanks, Mr. Combs and Ms. Potts. Thank you. All right, moving along, project. Record management. Archives working group update. I'm assuming this is for our city clerk. If not. Please correct me and the right person get on.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I I believe that, uh, C O Balts was prepared to discuss a, um, a brief. Update on this matter. I'm I'm happy to answer questions from the city's perspective as well.
I apologize. Mr. Balz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, and good afternoon to all the elected officials and everybody in the meeting today. It's nice to see all of you. Uh, I'll try to be brief, but but also thorough and answer questions if I can as well. So this item was actually requested, uh, uh, in a conversation that we had with Commissioner Hunthausen. Uh, but I'd like to report to all of you that our our county commissioners this year as a priority. Uh, have directed and provided, um, funds in our budget to move forward with, uh. Uh, what we've been referring to as a records management slash storage slash archives project. Uh, we've pulled together a working group. And, um. Uh, Danae Claiborne's been able to attend those meetings. Commissioner Logan. Has been at the meetings. Commissioner Hunthausen, uh, Troy Sampson from the city has been attending as well. As long as many, many other people representing different operations. Around the county government, um. And maybe I'll back up a little bit. Uh, in March of two thousand and seven, so what is that roughly fourteen years ago? There was a records management and archives program study done. Uh, with some recommendations, uh, in that study from those years ago. It took a look at, um. Where where records were being stored and it was specific to the county. It was specific to the county operations. And it took a look and did an inventory of. Oh, how many cubic feet of space was being used for record storage? Where records were being stored, what the legal requirements were that were being adhered to at that time. And, um, it identified dozens of locations where different records were being stored. It had a series of recommendations for staffing and looking into a more efficient centralized. Storage location, uh, some things like that. So. As we've been meeting. Um, we've been talking about that and that the the next logical step for us might be. For us to have that. March of two thousand and seven seven study that was done. And by the way, everyone, it was done by a firm. Called Northwest Archival Services out of Missoula, Montana. But we've been talking about that it might make sense for us to have that study updated. As a logical next step. Uh, and, uh, we also wanted to reach out to the city of Helena and also the city of East Helena. To see if there might be an interest, if it meets, um, the city's needs to participate with us. Uh, in looking at this project and possibly having this study updated as a logical next step. So we've been having meetings every other week. Uh. Uh, and where we are is that, um. We've discussed and talked about having a an MOU, a memorandum of understanding. Put together, uh, between the parties that, uh, just does commit to working with one another on this project again. If it meets everyone's needs. And I believe that a draft of that MOU was provided to all of you, um, as a part of this meeting today. So that's where we are on it. At the most recent meeting that we had. We had a presentation, I think was a good presentation from, uh. Let's see, Jefferson County and. Missoula County. Uh, they gave us information about what they've been doing on their records management. Their archiving as well. So, um, that's where we are. Uh, that MOU, uh, has been distributed out to the city of Helena, city of East Helena. Uh, in case you might want to consider it. And again. There's, there's nothing pressing on that request. Uh, for instance, if if, uh, either of the cities don't believe that it makes sense or meets your needs to participate right now in this process. That door will continue to stay open, uh, as we as we look at what we want to do in the future. Uh, but, um, uh, Mayor Collins, uh, I guess I would say too, if it's agreeable to you. Like I say, Commissioners Hunthausen and Logan have have been a part of these meetings too, if they might want to add anything to what I just said. Uh, but that's a very quick update of what this is about. Uh, again, I'll, I'm sorry to be repetitive, but I think the next logical step is for us to to decide. If we're going to go out for this study. Uh, to have it updated. Do we want that update to be focused only on the county's archiving and records management needs? Or do we want that scope to include the city of Helena and the city of East Helena as well? Uh, and I think I'll stop there. Thank you very much, and I'll be glad to answer any questions I can.
Thank you, Mr. Balls, and I know for sure that, uh, there is a need in the city. For records archiving and so I will be. I'm open to listening to the other commissioners, but, um, yeah, I'm with you. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So question for Mr. Balz and then a follow up comment if I may. Please, uh, Mr. Balz, the. Relative to the MOU. Any cost associated with either. Uh, the city of Helena or city of East Helena or county.
Very, very good question. Thank you. So so Mayor Collins and elected officials, uh, the the MOU is very broad and I would describe it as very general. Uh, and I want to want to thank, uh, Danae Claiborne very much for being our scribe and. And helping put that, uh, that document together. With regards to any commitments of funding. Um, the agreement, as I recall. Uh, just commits commits us to work together, attend the meetings, commit to doing that. And it's got a statement in it along the lines of that, uh, for instance, this. This study that would need to be updated, we would have to go through an RFP process to do that. There would be a cost associated with that. But it doesn't commit any of the. The MOU does not commit any of the parties. To any funding. However, it's got a statement in it, uh, to the effect that if there is funding that's required. That request would be taken back to the appropriate processes of both the city of Helena and East Helena, if they did want to be a part of that. Uh, so that's my recollection of what the MOU says right now. It 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 only makes a monetary commitment to the effect of. Um, if there's a request for funding, that it would go back to the appropriate parties for consideration as a part of their processes.
Thank you, Mr. Balls. Commissioner Logan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. Lost the question. So I'll go with the comment. So my involvement on this particular committee. Sort of happened organically. I've, um. I'm sort of a nerd and have been so. For quite some time, relative to city records, I would say. And so when this, um. When this came up, um. I had interest and experience, uh, for example. The Historic Preservation Officer Pam Matardo and I had in twenty sixteen or seventeen. Had done some, uh, tours of various sites. One was Missoula County. One was Jefferson County, the other, and the gold standard in terms of records management is is, uh, Butte Silver Bow. It's, um. Well, there are a lot of, um. Facilities upon which we can draw as we move forward, so. Um, ah, I. It it just now dawned on me the question that I had from Mr. Walt. So relative and, uh. Interim City Manager Joden, relative relative to either the city of Helena, East Helena. Entering into this MOU, how process wise, what do we need to? Do? Is that something that can be handled at the manager level or? Does it need to come before the commission?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Logan, I believe that the. At least on the city side, the manager can sign the MOU.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thomas and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Balls or? Clerk Claiborne. Oh. I don't see it, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Hi.
Commissioner Hunt House.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just an encouragement to, uh. To consider this. We we know that we, it's a priority for us. We want to move forward and and try to, uh. Uh, understand our needs, the county I'm talking about, and how we're going to accomplish those. Those ultimate goals for records management and archiving and and. Special things that we want to save. You know, we have stuff all over, whether it's in the courthouse or. At public works or just like you guys. I mean, there's stuff all over the place. So. Um, this MOU really is just a statement of us working together and. My one comment, I hate to poke us all again, but. Uh, I believe the MEU has been essentially ready for more than a month or a month or so and, uh. We're, we're ready to move forward and and begin the process, the RFP process for getting someone in to renew that study. Uh, so we're just waiting on whether our partners are interested or not. So, um. I I would encourage the, uh, consideration and and then let us either, uh, move forward or not. So I think we're ready to. To, uh, get something going in terms of, um, renewing that's that study and and trying to understand what our needs are. So. Just another poke and I'm sorry to be the poker today, but. You know, front burner.
Thanks, Commissioner. No pressure from Commissioner Hunt House and guys, um, no pressure at all. So just to keep it on the front burner, let's. Let's move forward. Anyway, any other comments or questions from the commission? If not, at this time, any public comments for the commission? From the public.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, I see no hands raised. I have no written public comment at this time.
Any final discussions from the, uh, commission? At this time, uh. Our next agenda item for Tuesday, April fifth, twenty twenty two, please contact Nadine. If you have any agenda items. For an upcoming event and all of that. With this, this meeting is formally adjourned.